City Council meeting, tonight is February 11th. And we have some exciting news tonight. We will have two new council members who are joining us. We just finished during the, our workshop tonight, interviews of our four final candidates. And the council voted, and our two new council members will be Bill Knutson and Sylvia Neblet. And they will be joining us after they're sworn in in just a short little bit. I wanted to start out tonight talking about a meeting that I had this morning concerning the census. The 2020 census is coming. And until the meeting this morning, I didn't have any idea how important, well, I know that the census is incredibly important, but how involved the city gets with the census to make sure that we get out the count. And so Joe Sharon and myself met this morning with a representative from the United States Census. And we talked about an entire process that we're going to be engaging in over this next year. And it will start with, we're going to have a workshop in April, which will put us out just about a year before the census is actually taken. And then we'll go into a deep dive in terms of planning for that census. One of the things we're going to be doing is asking our community to get involved with what they, we are calling Complete Count Committees. And we're going to look for volunteers from our community, from people with the school district and the faith community, veterans, business leaders, seniors, St. John's Hospital, the Karen Community, snowbirds, renters, college students, so that all groups in our community are represented. We spent quite a bit of time this morning talking about the relevance of the census that we get a good count, because the money that we get in terms of transportation and education, all of that, in terms of federal dollars, will be dependent on the census and the numbers that, that we put forward. And we obviously want to make sure that we have everyone counted in our community. And we're going to rely on the community. So if you would like to get involved, then please be prepared when we call for volunteers on our, to put up, forward a Complete Count Committee. Get involved with that. That would really be a great opportunity. I know one of the things we talked about this morning, too, was that there is also going to be some part-time work that is going to be available for that approximately about a year's period of time. Different jobs may be a little bit longer, some a little bit shorter. But the federal government is going to be recruiting 40,000 people in our state in order to help with the census. And it's a whole broad range of jobs that they're going to be looking for. Very flexible jobs, so people could work in the evenings and could work on the weekends and the, excuse me, flexible hours. And they start at about $20 an hour, and they go up from there. So we will also be putting information, if you're interested in actually working for the census, then we'll have that on our website as well. But we're, we're going to be really out there getting the count out so that we get an accurate tally of the number of people that we have, because it, it is so important, really, to the future of our community and actually for our state, because there is a question whether or not, and I've heard both ways on this, whether or not we would be able to actually keep eight representatives in Congress, or whether or not we may lose one, depending on our census count. So it's going to be really important that we get people out. So that will be coming up. We'll have the, in fact, Ms. Coleman, I'll give you the Census Partnership Specialist that works with cities, I'll give you his name. And you can put him on the agenda for, for a workshop in April. And then we'll kick off putting together this Complete Count Committee in our community. So with that, with the word of the census, let's have this pledge of allegiance, okay? Do y'all join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Schmidt, would you please conduct the roll call for us?
Yes, Councilmember Juniman.
Here.
Present.
Mayor Abrams.
Here.
Okay. Next, an approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Juniman, for approval of the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The approval of minutes. Let's start with the January 28th, 2019 City Council Workshop Minutes.
I move approval.
Okay.
Moved by Juniman, seconded by Smith. Approval of the January 28th, 2019 City Council Workshop Minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the January 28th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. Do you have a motion?
Move approval of the January 28th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juniman. Approval of the January 28th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we move on to administrative appointments and presentations. Administrative presentations are first. Do we, we didn't have any.
Council Calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Calendar. City Manager Coleman, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. The Council Calendar is an opportunity for staff to convey to the council some of the items that are coming up on the near workshops and council meetings. On February 25th, we will have Excel Energy here to talk about a gas main replacement project that's going to really impact our city from one boundary to the next, a main replacement project. So we're going to hear a little bit about that. We're also going to do commission interviews for some of our commission and boards. On March 11th, we will have at the workshop an update on the Nature Center Strategic Plan, which was just completed. And I will be giving a presentation on how to conduct city business in public meetings, and that's really for the benefit of our two new council members, but a refresher is always good for everybody. And then I wanted to just remind council and for our two new members, on March 25th, we are going to have a photographer here to do all of our photos. I wrote about kind of the time schedule and the FYI, but we would really like to have you here at 4:15, I think, is when the photographer will be here. And Mr. Sharon has got the services of a photographer who does things a little bit differently. We're going to do some of the, the formal, just headshots, but we're also, I think he's going to do shots of us during the meeting to get more candid, I guess. And we will be sending out some kind of what to wear and not wear and things like that. So you'll hear a little bit more about that, but that'll be on the 25th, so you'll want to be ready for your photo op. And we do put it on our webpage, and it actually is used on our email system, so we really do need your participation in that. Then following that, we have kind of some of the things that we're working on, and I'll just give you a brief report of that. Tobacco 21, we have been asked by the folks that have that organization to schedule that in front of the council, and we're just really waiting to have a full council to bring that forward. So that'll be coming up soon. We talked about the tree program, and we're moving forward with that. That will start this spring, our tree replacement program. We are going to invite District 622 to talk about facility changes, but I thought, Mayor, I would wait till after we have a chance to meet with them. So we'll wait and see how that goes. Public Works Director Steve Love is working on the pedestrian safety plan. And we do have some recommendations from the Design Review Board on the sign removal on vacant buildings, so we are going to bring that forward here soon. And then you've asked for follow-up on the on-street parking ordinance and the new excess calls for service ordinance mid-year. And then pet licenses, we will schedule for an upcoming workshop. And this is also the time where council members bring something forward, if there's research that they would like staff to do on a particular topic, or an issue that they've heard about and they want us just to look into it for them. This is the time that we put that on and get consensus from the council that this is something that staff should work on. So is there anything tonight that you have you would like us to spend some time on?
This is where I'd like to add the, well, I've already talked about it, the census, because that really is so important, and get that scheduled early in April so that we can get this committee off and running.
Okay, I've got that one.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wondered if we had updates on the date for the Sandy Lake Community meeting?
Yeah, it's going to be either March 6th or 7th. And I will ask Ms. Sinwall again tomorrow when that will be.
To make sure we get that on our calendar.
It's one of those two evenings.
And then do you have, do you have an idea, I know it's not set yet, but a kind of a range of when these, the communities for the renter rental licensing will be?
Yeah, actually, one is tomorrow.
Okay.
It's at the fire station.
It's at the fire station from 5:00 to 7:00, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then the other one is March 5th or 6th.
6th, I can't remember.
Yeah. It's in the FYI, it's on the calendar attached.
Yeah, I know. Those should probably get in here, too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, as community events, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think anything that is of note for us should probably be on here.
You're right, I forgot about that. Thank you.
We'll let it go this time.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. We did not have any council presentations that anyone wanted to bring forward. Okay, then we are moving on to the resolution for filling the vacancy in the office of a council member. Pardon me?
We'll do it alphabetical.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Coleman, do you want to take that?
As you mentioned, Mayor Abrams, tonight, through a very extensive application process, we have narrowed it down to our two council members that'll be filling the vacancy for the office of council member, and then a resolution for filling the vacancy and calling for a special election in the office of council member. And just to, to make that clear, the first resolution is taking Mr. Zhang's spot on the council. The second resolution is for filling Mayor Abrams' your seat, the remaining two years of your term. And then we will call up, one at a time, the two new members for swearing in and maybe a photo op, if they'd like one.
Of course, we want one to put it on our website.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson, you're, you're up.
Do we need to do a motion?
I think, oh, yeah, do we have to do the motions first? I'm sorry, but you can still stand there, that's fine.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the attached resolution that would fill in William Knutson's name.
I'll move to approve the attached resolution, filling the vacancy of the office of council member.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juniman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to talk before they?
Did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Can.
Yeah, I did not vote yet.
Oh. Sorry.
That's all right.
My apologies.
We're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a comment on the next one. I will vote aye on that. And then I'll reserve my comment for the next time around since it's now moot.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That was, okay.
I will put my light again on in the next motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. So did we, we had the vote?
I voted aye.
Okay. We're clear on that.
Yes.
The vote was unanimous in terms of the resolution filling the vacancy in the office of council member. Moving on to the second motion to approve the.
I move the resolution for filling the vacancy and calling for a special election in the office of council member for your vacant seat.
Second.
Moved by Juniman, seconded by Smith. Motion to approve the attached resolution, filling the vacancy and calling for a special election in the office of council member. Any further discussion?
Why, yes.
Why?
First, I just, I wanted to thank staff and my fellow council members for this process. I think it's been a really good process, it's been a challenge. We had a lot of great candidates, you know, even beyond the four great candidates we talked to tonight, there were many others in, in the pool. I do feel compelled, however, just to publicly state that I think, while I think we've come to a great conclusion, and while I think the four people we've interviewed tonight were fantastic, I am disappointed we weren't able to include Nikki Villa-Vincenzo in our interview process. I rated her as number one on my list largely because she garnered a tremendous amount of support from the voters of Maplewood. And I do think that, to me, that is something that is important for us to take into account as we go through this process. There's lots of things for us to take into account. For me, understanding the, the perspective of the voters, the residents of Maplewood is probably the most important thing, which is why I rated her that way. And I understand how the process works. I think it was a fair and transparent and good process. I by no means impugn that process, but I do think that it's, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to include her tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Juniman?
I just thought we should bring everyone's attention, these two people will know it, but maybe everybody else won't, that no matter how the resolutions were worded, both of these positions are for two years, it's just that one of them will automatically be on the ballot, the other one, we have to have, quote, "a special election" that will be attached to the general election in 2020. So both of these people will be running for office, if they still want to do that.
Thank you for that. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now we move to swearing in our new council members. Ms. Schmidt, would you help us with that, please?
I'm just going to start. And this one will be yours. You can sign this one, and that one you can take with you. That's okay for me. And you can probably follow along on that. So if you want to repeat after me, okay? If you want to raise your right hand. I, Bill Knutson.
I, Bill Knutson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
In the city of Maplewood.
In the city of Maplewood.
In the county of Ramsey.
In the county of Ramsey.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Ms. Neblet, do you want to join us?
It's too late now.
You can sign this one.
We can't change our agenda. Yes. It's too late.
And then you can have that one, and that would be free for records. Okay, if you want to raise your right hand. I, Sylvia Neblet.
I, Sylvia Neblet.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
In the city of Maplewood.
In the city of Maplewood.
In the county of Ramsey.
In the county of Ramsey.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the bestment of my, to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come and join us. We are now moving to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and non-controversial and are approved by one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or wants to make a comment regarding an item, the vote should be held until the questions or comments are made, then the single vote should be taken. If a council member objects to an item, it should be removed and acted upon as a separate item. Councilmember Juniman, I think you were first.
Yes, please, I'd just like to highlight number three, since we always acknowledge donations. And then I would like to also highlight number seven.
Okay. So let's start, well, let's get all the others identified. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to highlight five, six, and eight. Five and six for the grants that we're accepting. And then eight just being a rather large purchase, I think it's good for us to just talk through that quick.
Okay. And I was also going to highlight five and six because of the grant and how important that is for us. So let's start with item number three. Let's see. Fire Chief Lucan, do you want to talk about the donation from Schmelz Countryside Volkswagen, please?
Mayor and council, thank you. Yes, as you well, are all well aware, that the Schmelz family does a wonderful job in supporting our public safety group that we have here. And once again, they've made a great donation to the fire department and the $1,000 gift. They also asked, and we are definitely going to do that, is use it as part of our senior group money that we have to put on our roadshows, that we go out and speak to those folks, as well as for our fall issues that we have.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, while you're here, do you want to do five and six as well?
I can do that.
And eight.
And eight. Well, I think Mike Mondor is on eight, isn't he? Oops. Yeah. Mike, we'll do, have Mike do eight.
Well, the first one is, we, late last year, it usually takes about a year to get grants through FEMA, and it's the Assistance to Fire Grants is the actual program it is. And so we started this one, Chief Mondor and I started working on this one well over a year ago. We got it in very late December to be able to start purchasing this. It's for really some needed water rescue equipment we don't have. As I have in my, the attachment, it's really that we're getting rid of a boat, motor, and trailer that was back, purchased back in the East County Line days, and puts it well over 30 years old. Now, the boat worked, it didn't sink or anything like that, but the, but the motor had issues to it, and we really needed to update what we had to some of the more modern equipment they had with it. So we applied for that. We also got some additional rope and some other, what we call Gumby suits, suits that you can wear in both, both hot and cold weather that you can use. So we've got a few of those as well that we had on there. The other grant is through Ramsey County, and it's through, through the state, and I would assume again through FEMA, but we have to apply for it, and it comes through Ramsey County. And that was for two of the Explorer Rangers. And they're six Peter, six, six-seater Rangers, plus it has an actual tail on the back of it that you can put stuff in it. We really sat down, and as we spoke to the fire department, we spoke with the police department, really talked about what some of our needs were. These two gators will be used heavily at all of our public events. They'll be used heavily at the Fourth of July, where we now can move people around. If we get someone who's injured, we can pick them up and get them out of a safe place if we need it. The police department will use those that they have to move their folks around, especially in the later evening hours when it gets dark, to put people at certain areas to watch. We'll also be able to use that at the Ramsey County Fairs. That's another big area that where we have, you know, issues to where we can use this equipment, as well as also as where we do our park and rec stuff as well, other areas that we can have these available at. So we applied for the grant, it's almost $50,000, and it was for two of those and two trailers. And again, we were very fortunate enough to get them, and as part of our public safety working together, we were able to get one for each department.
You know, I want to commend the fire staff. When I was reading my packet, you know, it, I wanted to make sure that our residents know and understand that between the $25,000 grant for the boat and the almost $50,000 grant for the two Polaris North Star Ranger Crew ATVs and trailers, that's $75,000 worth of equipment that you folks went out. equipment that you folks went out and went after that our residents don't have to pay for. And so I really appreciate the fact that, I mean, you really went above and beyond in seeking out these grants. These are things that are going to be very valuable for our community and for our staff to be able to use those kinds of, those pieces of equipment, and yet our taxpayers don't have to pay for them. And so, really, that's going above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you all who were involved in seeking out these grants. That's $75,000, very impressive, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And Chief Mondor, would you come up and talk about G8, please? The purchase of a new ambu-
Seven and eight.
Oh, seven and eight, I'm sorry, seven and eight.
Mayor and council, thank you. Yes, item seven is renewing, we revamped the agreement, but essentially renewing the relationship with Century College to continue to serve as a clinical internship site. It's a testing grounds where we get a lot of our candidates through the community colleges, both Inver Hills and Century College. And we want to be community partners, especially with Century, given their proximity and all the other initiatives that we work on. So we worked with Mr. Beatty to update that agreement, to reflect some more current language, and are looking forward to continuing that relationship with the college moving forward.
Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. The reason I wanted to highlight this was because I don't know how many people know that this partnership has been in existence, and how it's useful in more than one way, because we also find some of our candidates for these jobs through this program, so it's really, really worthwhile. Thank you, Mike.
You bet.
Thank you. And then G8, a new ambulance?
Yes. G8 is the purchase of a 2019 ambulance. Councilmember Smith, the cost is significant, and we certainly appreciate that during some of the more difficult economic times and with the EMS fund having struggles in the 2007 to 2012, really, we got behind in replacing our fleet. This is replacing a 2,000, your 2,000 ambulance, with 112,000 miles on it. The technology certainly is extremely dated in that ambulance. The ride in the back of the ambulance is not what we consider comfortable by today's technological standards. The patient layout, it was designed for a different operation. When we had ambulances then, we had volunteers coming in. Now we have full-time firefighters that store a lot more gear and a lot more technology in those ambulances. And some of the costs have increased with both provider and patient safety at mind. So we have a power-load stretcher system that securely locks the patient to the ambulance now, so if we ever get in an accident, they're safer, our providers are safer. But we usually see about a 3%-ish increase per year on these types of services and the medical equipment. So I appreciate the cost is significant, but we are being thoughtful about our fleet replacement plan and trying to get caught up. And then we have a solid plan in the CIP moving forward to make sure that, once our rigs hit 100,000 miles, we're at least starting to consider that the cost of maintenance for those versus the cost of repairing. And we would purchase this through a lease program right now. The health of the EMS fund has recovered greatly, and we're continuing to work with that, on that with Ms. Paul Seth. But I honor any questions, if there are any.
And what do we do with our, the old ambulance that, the rig that we are replacing?
The, we try to auction them off, the past couple. If there's a use at a community college, we've tried to look at those options too, like we did with the fire truck earlier this year. Once they reach 19 years old, there's not a lot of value left in them. We can't repurpose them to another service, maybe in rural Minnesota. But as we start to replace this fleet, our, the fleet that we're pushing out will have more value for us to help offset some of the replacement costs of these new ambulances. So we're getting to be about at that point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda items G1 through 11.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Consent agenda items 1 through 11, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we move on. We have no public hearings tonight. We do have new business. We have one item on new business concerning the Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvement. Mr. Love, would you like to please give us a staff report on that?
Sure. Mayor and council, good evening. The item before you tonight is for Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvement Project. This represents our full reconstruction project that we proposed for 2019. Tonight I have with me John Gerusch, he's our Assistant City Engineer and our Project Lead. He'll be giving a presentation on the project, and I've asked if we could give a little bit of a longer presentation as an opportunity to bring up our new council members up to speed on where we're at, how we got here, and a little bit about the project. So with that, I'll have John give the presentation, and both John and I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvements, City Project 1801. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
You're good? Okay. As I was saying, this is the Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvement Project, City Project 18-01. On the right side of the screen there, you'll see the streets included as part of this project. They include Ivy Avenue on the north, Ferndale Street on the west, Dennis Street, Farrell Street, Mayhill Road, and then Hawthorne Avenue on the south there. The project area is generally bounded by Maryland Avenue on the south, and then Century Avenue on the east to kind of get you in the, in the area. So why did we choose these streets? The streets in this area have very poor pavement condition. They total 1.2 miles in length and have an average pavement condition index rating of 46 out of 100. So a pavement condition index rating is basically, we send somebody out every year, they take a look at the condition of the street, they basically count cracks and assign a value to that street, to the condition of that street. So 100 being a brand-new street, zero being a fully deteriorated street. So the streets in this area, 46 out of 100, they've deteriorated to the point where patching is no longer cost-effective or even possible in some circumstances. There's numerous drainage issues throughout the project area. There's water that's pining in the streets, as you can see in the picture on the right. We have significant icing that's happening in some portions of the project in the winter, causing a hazard for motorists. And residents have also noted a high groundwater table in that area. There's also a number of issues with the concrete curb and gutter in the area. A lot of areas have settled curb, areas that are holding water, and a lot of significant cracking and deterioration of that concrete curb and gutter. So today, we've done a number of things to communicate with the residents in the project area. We sent out an informational packet back in October of 2018, and that packet included an article on street improvements, what a street improvement is, some street improvement frequently asked questions, a flyer on assessments and how those can be paid and what they are, as well as a questionnaire to obtain input from the residents in the area on the project. We also held a neighborhood meeting back in November of 2018. At that meeting, we've had a presentation followed by a general question-and-answer session with the residents, and some of the major areas of discussion at that meeting including the, included the conditions of the streets in the area, drainage concerns of the residents, the proposed sidewalks in the neighborhood, the need for additional street lighting in the neighborhood, as well as some traffic concerns the residents had. And then we brought those residents back in January of this year to provide an update from that first neighborhood meeting, as well as to obtain additional feedback from the residents in the project area. So taking into consideration all that data we had and the input from the residents, we developed a project scope. On the project, the staff is recommending a full reconstruction of the streets in the project area. That includes new concrete curb and gutter, a new aggregate base and road subbase, as well as two new layers of asphalt pavement within that neighborhood. We're also proposing some significant upgrades to the storm sewer system to address some of those drainage concerns that were brought to us by the residents. And we are also proposing sidewalks on select project streets. So on Ferndale Street on the west side of the project, as well as Ivy Avenue on the north side, those major, you know, the neighborhood collector-type streets, we're proposing sidewalks on both of those streets to tie the neighborhood into the, you know, the future regional infrastructure, as well as to tie the neighborhood into the numerous bus stops that are on those streets. We're also proposing a number of repairs to the sanitary sewer, as well as some minor repairs to the water main system. In total, the project is estimated to cost $3,806,000, and we're proposing to fund this project through a combination of general obligation improvement bonds, the environmental utility fund, our sanitary sewer fund, St. Paul Regional Water Services, and the WAC Fund for Water System Improvements, as well as assessments to those properties that are benefiting from the project. Let's take a step back here and go into a little bit what a special assessment is. So special assessments, as you saw in that previous slide, are just one of the funding sources that we utilize here in the city to finance our public improvement projects. And each year, our city council sets the maximum rates that those assessments can be for the various types of improvements. Then when we get into the project development stage, when we have more detail on the project, the city hires an independent appraisal firm to determine what that actual benefit to those properties is. And then per Minnesota State Statute 429, the assessment amount cannot be greater than the direct benefit to the properties. So we test that maximum rate during the project. So looking ahead a little bit, if everything was approved and we move forward, that assessment hearing would be held in April of this year. And prior to that assessment hearing, residents within the project area would be mailed an official notice of their assessment. And in that notification, it would detail the amount of their assessment, and there are a number of ways assessments can be paid, which we'll get into in future meetings. We discuss those in more depth. But there is a number of ways those can be paid. There are also a number of options for deferrals of assessments to delay when that assessment would have to be paid. And there is also, that official assessment notice would also detail their right to object to their assessment. And prior to that assessment hearing, that we're saying will be in April of the year, we would hold an additional neighborhood meeting to cover those assessments and discuss those in more detail with the residents. So taking a step back here, looking at the project's schedule, previously in August of last year, the city council ordered the preparation of the feasibility study for this project. The current step, where we are tonight, we're looking at accepting that feasibility study and setting a date for the public hearing. Staff is proposing that public hearing to be held on February 25th of this year, and that will be the meeting at which residents can come to the council and provide their input on the proposed improvements. And then after receiving all that input from the residents, the council would vote whether or not to move forward to the next stage. If we did move forward after that point, staff would be preparing plans and specifications for the project in the February through March timeframe, with looking at holding a bid opening in April of this year. And the assessment hearing, we're tentatively proposing to hold in April of this year. That assessment hearing would allow the residents an opportunity to provide input on the proposed assessments. That would be the opportunity for them to object, if they wish to object to their assessment. And then after considering all that input from the residents, the council would vote at the end of that assessment hearing, and that would be the ultimate meeting at which the project would move forward or not. If everything does move forward, staff is proposing construction to begin in May of this year and take the entirety of the construction seizing rap, season wrapping up in November of the year. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the resolution accepting the feasibility study, authorizing preparations of plans and specifications, and calling for a public hearing for the Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvements, City Project 1801. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. You know, one thing that struck me as being just a little bit different about this project is that there seem to be more drainage problems than we normally see in some of our neighborhood, or some of these road construction projects. Mr. Love, did you want to comment on that?
Mayor and council, that's correct. Actually, this is one of the areas that were identified with flooding issues back from the 2011 storm event. So what council authorized staff to do prior to even the feasibility study was to do a drainage study in that area. So we used the results of that in the development of the feasibility. So this certainly was a known, known area of issues, so we are putting more resources towards that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Smith, I see why I was confused because- I know. -your button is mine, and I, I'm sorry.
And your button is mine, narily.
They'll be renamed, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm, my question for Mr. Gerusch, was there any issues raised by residents in the initial neighborhood meetings that something we should be aware of, or any concerns that may be brewing? Thank you, Councilmember Smith. There were a handful, I outlined some of the items that they mentioned at the neighborhood meetings. The biggest one that they brought up during the neighborhood meeting was a concern with access onto Century Avenue from Ivy Avenue. So we have solicited, or are working with a consultant engineer right now on assessing the situation there and seeing if there are, you know, if it does warrant any additional improvements to that intersection. Keeping in mind that Century Avenue is a state road, owned and operated by MinDOT, so any improvements there would have to go through, through the state on that. So, yes, that was the main thing brought up there. Street lighting was another item that was brought to our attention in the neighborhood, and we are working with Excel Energy on addressing that issue.
Another question?
Yeah, just to follow up, can you explain what you mean by access?
Yes. So they were concerned with the ability to safely turn off of Ivy Avenue onto Century Avenue with the volume of traffic on Century Avenue.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. I just want to point to my two new colleagues to some of the pages in this feasibility study, which would solve any insomnia I might have. But aside from that, this is a kind of a new format. We haven't been doing this for very long, with this much information that's in front of us. And I, the colored graphs at the end are very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Love, I just, because it helps people get a grasp of what neighborhood this is and what's going, what's there. And so it's not just a pavement study, but it's who's there, what they're living with, why they might be asking their questions. And then also the proposed sidewalk, that's on what page?
It was a very detailed report.
Yes, and then, and the photos of the, I always appreciate the photos of the pavement, because it looks like something from 1930. But I just wanted to point out that this is, I know it's very helpful from my own experience, if you have time to read through these when they come. And this is a good one, because he included so much information, it helps to know where we're going. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions by the council? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the resolution accepting the feasibility study, authorizing preparation of plans and specifications, and calling for a public hearing on the Ferndale-Ivy Street Area Improvement, City Project 18-01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson. Motion to approve the resolution accepting feasibility report, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications, and calling for a public hearing at 7:00 PM on February 25th, 2019, for the Ferndale-Ivy Area Street Improvement, City Project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, the motion is passed. And with that, I believe that is our last agenda item.
Don't be disillusioned, you two new people, it doesn't normally go this quickly.
And with that, I think this is a record time, it's actually before 8:00, but with that, I will adjourn the meeting.